Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda, and they can also be found at the back. This meeting is also being televised live on PSEV-TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the City of Cities Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on City's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting City Manager, City Clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, may I get roll call, please? Council members Brown?
Here.
Campos?
Here.
Mel?
Here.
Roach? Present. Serrano? Mr. Serrano is, excuse this evening...
Thank you. Mayor Potem Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barajas?
Present. Thank you, and with that, would you please join me with the, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And we will move on to item four, verbal reports from council members. Any council members attended any events or meetings and wish to share a little bit of that feedback? Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Council member Brown?
Um, this Saturday, um, I visited the Chia Wana High School. I'm forgetting the topic here.
Family, Pasco Police Family Day.
Yes, and Family Day was all of that a family day. It was really nice. They had a lot going on. I got there pretty much towards the end with some other events, but it was, it looked so pleasant and so fun, and the engagement with the community, with the police officers was just really awesome. So it was a great day, so I'm glad to report that that was a successful event at Chia Wana High School.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mayor Potem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Um, I went to the Celebration of Community Diversity and Culture that was held by the Trade Cities Inclusion and Diversity Council over in Columbia Park in Kennewick. I had an opportunity to hear the Confederated Coldfield Tribes, some of their performers came down to, to perform. Absolutely wonderful as, as we've been able to start inviting them to our events. I think that's been a, a great benefit to the diversity and, and enjoyment for, for the, the community. I had an opportunity to talk with some of their, their representatives there and just, um, um, and I'd ask staff if they're, if at all possible to, for us to get a little more information on what additional things that they're doing in town. And my understanding is they have, um, they're growing their presence on a constant basis, and I'd love to hear more about that, so. Yeah, and the one thing I'll say, uh, let's follow up to this, is Columbia Park is nice. And what I think, the one thing that was, was tough for me is that, that we don't really have a stage like that in Pasco where we can really host an event like that outdoors. And so I know we're talking about our facilities, um, our Parks and Rec facilities, um, and that, and the master plan's going to that, and that's something that will be coming up as a comment for that, is just making sure that we have an art opportunity to host some of these live outdoor events and good event space, um, and, and our already beautiful parks, either, either a new park, maybe over in the west side, maybe conjoined with our, with a community center, maybe with an aquatics facility, maybe, you know, maybe it's something that we expand in Volunteer Park, which we're already focusing on the urban forest there. So the shade will be absolutely wonderful. I don't know what the right spot is, but I would very much like to see an opportunity for us to host large-scale outdoor events in, in Pasco. So, uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Campos?
Uh, nothing on events. Uh, I just wanted to share a little snippet from an email I got. I think this is kind of a cool thing, so this gal has been kind of interacting with me a little bit since she's been following the BFT board stuff. And what she wanted to share was, is, um, well, I lost it. Okay, so, "Since COVID, I, she, has become a city council observer of Kennewick and Richland, and let me tell you, there's no comparison. Pasco Council seeks and strives to listen to citizens' concerns in a fair and honest way. It's diverse, therefore many points of view are presented and evaluated for the good of all." Earlier in the comments, she made that she's super proud of, of her city council, so it's just nice to see, you know, somebody taking ownership of that and recognizing the work that we do, and I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thank you for sharing that. I do want to add a little bit, uh, from this weekend's events. I did attend the Family Day over at Chia Wana High School. It was a event geared towards, um, community and bringing families together and participating and, and just really family enjoyment. There was, there was resources out there, um, you know, everything from foster care information to face painting to the debut of Pasco Cares Foundation's popsicle cart. So there were some pictures on social media. Chief was out there passing out free popsicles, um, to all the children. There was bounce houses, there was, uh, competitions, a kickball competition with the police officers. It was just so much fun. A lot of feedback was families had missed out on, um, you know, being out there in the community and just really grateful on how the police department, our officers engage with kids and the community itself. So just wanted to share a little bit more on that. I did not make it to, uh, Kennewick side. It was a long day. But, you know, thank you, everyone that participates and is out there, um, putting your best foot forward. And again, the comments like, uh, Councilman Campos shared, it's, it's about being in the community. It's about seeing what the community needs and then making sure those needs are being met. Thanks again. With that, we'll move on to item five, items for discussion. A, we do have a presentation, Parks and Rec Master Plan Update, Director Ruckey.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Madam Mayor and, uh, members of council. Yeah, good evening. This is our third installment of our updates to council, where Mig Consulting and John Venus in particular will be presenting just an update on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Uh, we've been diligently working on it. It's a little bit delayed, should be ready this fall, but, uh, we're excited to see some of the feedback that's come out from the community and how it's incorporated into, uh, uh, just various tenets of the plan and sections. We are going to be providing an update on the project's schedule and progress this evening, outcomes of the most recent community outreach activities, uh, some priority improvements, and then, uh, some draft plan elements and review processes to the council. So, uh, with that, I will turn it over to, uh, John from Mig Consulting, and I will work the slideshow from here.
All right, thank you, Zach. Uh, good evening, uh, council members. My name is John Venus. I'm a project manager with MIG Consultant Team, and, um, very excited to share with you tonight some updates on what we've been doing and, um, get your feedback on, on what happens next. So let's get going. Uh, Zach, you can move to the next slide. So an overview tonight, we'll bring you up to speed on what we've done. I know the last time we presented was back in January, so we've done a lot of work since then. Uh, tonight, I really want to talk about all of that input that we've heard. I know, uh, we just mentioned listening to the community, identifying what those needs are, and so that's what we're doing tonight, is reporting back on, um, the needs, but also the big picture vision. This is a long-term plan. This is a 20-year plan for Pasco, so we're looking not just, you know, five years from now, we're looking long-term. So it's very important to share what we've heard from the community for that longer-term vision. Part of that is also what the priorities are. Uh, everybody has an opinion, and we've heard all sorts of different ideas for the Parks and Recreation System, uh, so it's really important to start diving into specific priorities. Finally, we'll talk about next steps in the planning process. So project outcomes, if you remember, uh, we've, again, this is our third, uh, meeting with you all tonight, but the reason we're doing this, this project is because Parks and Recreation and Trails and open space, those are all very important parts of Pasco, a very important part of the quality of life. And so to have a plan for those features, for those amenities, is extremely important. So part of that is, uh, inventorying existing conditions, looking at community needs and priorities, talking about that tonight, the vision, the goals, what does the community want to see, what does the council want to see, and then recommend, recommendations and direction for the future. Some of these are very specific parts of what City of Washington wants to see and plans so that the City of Pasco is competitive with grant funding. Uh, next slide. So the planning process, uh, we are now squarely on our way to the last phase, phase four. So we started, uh, a year ago, summer of 2021, documented conditions, be in our public outreach process. I'll show you a little bit more about what that entailed. Um, and then basically from this winter through the spring up until now, we've been documenting those priorities and actually getting into specific projects, costs, funding mechanisms and so forth, uh, to create an action plan, um, for this long-range plan. So I'm going to share with you a little bit more about that, and then when I close the presentation, I'll explain a little bit more about what happens next. So community engagement to date, uh, Zach mentioned that, um, we've had a few different delays, and the, the big reason for that is we started the project in the middle of the pandemic, and I'm not blaming the pandemic on, on that, but we did spend extra time listening to community members. So we had a number of different opportunities, you can see listed here, and in each one, we wanted to make sure we had that open as long as possible to hear from as many people as we could. So so far, a number of, of online and in-person opportunities to hear from folks. This image on the right was, uh, just back in May, we were at Road 36 Soccer Fields, uh, just providing information, hearing from folks. Uh, this is my colleague, Alfonso, a Spanish speaker, so we, uh, wanted to make sure we were providing English and Spanish, everything we did, uh, the surveys were both English and Spanish, so very inclusive, we know that's important, um, and so that's what we wanted to accomplish here. So we've done a lot. The goal is not to have one particular instrument or opportunity to hear from the community, it's to have several and to layer those all on top of, you know, another, so we can really find out what does the community want to see. Uh, next slide. So a little bit about what we've done, uh, but perhaps most importantly is who we've heard from. Uh, we know that Pasco is a diverse community. Uh, we know that there are all sorts of age groups, we know that there are all sorts of demographics, so, uh, from the results of all that we've done so far, we've heard from a wide cross-section of the community, uh, so I just wanted to list some of those folks here. Partners are also a big part of Parks and Recreation in Pasco, so the county, the port, federal state agencies, uh, those are all important aspects of this project, so we've been involving, uh, all sorts of different stakeholders as well through this process. Next slide. So I want to talk about what we've heard. I think back in January, we, we were just starting to share some of the information we have been collecting, uh, so now we've compiled all of that, put that all together, and have all sorts of information on what community needs are. And it's been incredible. I think the first survey, we had over 900 responses, the second, we had over 750, uh, so really tremendous, uh, support to, to find out what, what folks are interested in seeing. And it's varied, of course, no two people think alike, no two neighborhoods in Pasco have the same needs or issues or opportunities, uh, but we start to see some themes emerging, and a couple of these are the interest in active sports, and this encompasses everything from organized sports, soccer, baseball, softball, um, but in particular, this survey, this image I'm showing here, showing results of our first survey we had in 2021. So interest in active, uh, you know, getting, getting outside, staying fit, being healthy, but you can see the next highest percent is, uh, being outside, being close to nature. We know that's important as well. And there are lots of other elements, uh, about this, but just some kind of, some high-level parts of this. Uh, next slide. So we asked a lot of questions around what people value, what are some of the things they want to see, and as I mentioned, Pasco is a diverse community, uh, it's also geographically very diverse, uh, from downtown to new growth areas. There are different opportunities and challenges throughout, throughout the city. So we did a lot of map-based analysis to kind of find out more about what's going on, uh, on the ground. And so this graphic shows some of the mapping we did, looking at, uh, a convenient walk distance to a park, uh, and so the yellow or the orange show a close proximity to a park, so basically, if you're thinking about a 10-minute walk to get to a park, if you're in that yellow or orange area, you have great access. And so conversely, if you're outside of that in the gray area, uh, really a little bit harder to get to a park. There may be a busy street, there may not be anything at all, and so that's really where we started to focus in on is what's going on in those, those areas that are underserved. Uh, next slide. We also looked at equity. Uh, equity is a lens that we use throughout this process, both in terms of the outreach and the analysis, uh, for this plan. And so we looked at a number of different demographic and socioeconomic indicators, uh, to help us understand what's going on on the ground. Uh, and so this is census information to help us show big-picture areas that really have the greatest need in terms of equity. So the darker green shapes are generally areas that are more demographically diverse. This combines that previous map where neighborhoods don't have really great access to a nearby park, uh, and other factors that help us really start to hone in on where, where do we need to look, where do we need to prioritize? Uh, next slide. So the vision, um, a lot of words on here, uh, but what I wanted to do is highlight what those key themes are, how do we put this all together, and, and what have we heard, uh, from the community as where we want to head 10, 20 years from now? So I just wanted to highlight a couple of elements of the, the longer vision. But first and foremost, it's a comprehensive system, it's equitable and accessible. Uh, we heard a lot about community health and livability. Uh, people go right to parks, recreation programming, trails, uh, we heard that louder than ever during the pandemic when people really didn't have, uh, many outlets, and Parks and Pasco were a, a great opportunity to get outside. Uh, streets, trails, those are all big parts of the system. Uh, you know, obviously, there's a separate, uh, street division, there's a transportation system master plan, but we also incorporated recommendations from streets, off-street trails into this plan. So safe connections, safety to parks, to schools, downtown, to the river, and so on. Linkages to the river and the region, responding to community needs, obviously, we talked a lot about that. And then some important ones that are here, uh, listed at the last statement is excellent communication and an involved community. A lot of the feedback we heard was, um, folks that have lived in Pasco for years and years, or, or folks that maybe just moved here, uh, they, they love the city in the, in which they live, they love Parks and Recreation, and so communication is extremely important, both to share, uh, information about what's going on, you know, events, a new park opening, uh, but also to hear about concerns, you know, what's, what's going on in the community and what are some opportunities that we want to consider? Uh, next slide. So with that, I want to get to priorities. Uh, the goals of identifying future priorities are listed here. So again, we heard from thousands of people, everybody has an idea, um, so what we want to do is to start narrowing down what, what is really critical, what's most important. And to do that, we had a number of different activities, uh, to hear feedback and to show trade-offs. We can't have everything, some things are more expensive than others, some will take a lot longer to achieve than others, so we had to show, um, that, that trade-off. Uh, so comparing trade-offs with resources and then identify locations, costs, and phasing, obviously, key parts of the plan. Uh, next slide. So I've got just a couple of slides I wanted to highlight for where we are now. Uh, these all highlight what projects we will be focusing it on. Uh, so by the next time we meet, we'll have specific projects that basically follow along with what these general priorities are. Uh, the first one I list here is support for programming, and that's programming of all types. Uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, community events, um, uh, perhaps being missing here in Pasco, having a, an event venue, stage, so forth. But I have highlighted on this slide, three of the top recreation priorities we've heard from the community. Uh, so we talked about the need for activities, an active Parks and Rec system, so youth sports and fitness-related programs being a highlight, year-round opportunities, uh, something to do at night during the winter, uh, you know, it's not always nice outside, so making sure there are opportunities year-round, and then aquatics classes and programs. Very pleased to hear that, uh, there was a successful bond measure since we met last in January, so very exciting, opening up a lot of doors for recreation programming opportunities. Uh, next slide. Investment in existing parks. Uh, Pasco has a, a very large park system in terms of the number of different park types, developed parks, special facilities and so forth, uh, but not all parts of Pasco have brand-new parks with, what, brand-new play areas and, and so on. So we heard a lot about, hey, I've got a park down the street, it needs a little TLC. Can we invest in improvements to existing parks? So some specifics around that that we heard is a big priority, uh, shade, uh, not a lot of shade in some parks, so adding some shade structures, but also considering, um, climate change, drought tolerance, uh, and, and with landscaping, irrigation, water use. Uh, play areas being very important, we've heard from a lot of families, so updated play areas, places to gather, uh, picnicking, community events, just being out with friends and families, those are the, one of the top activities we've heard about, so having, um, more opportunities for that, but also quality, well-maintained, uh, new facilities to enjoy. Uh, next slide. And then the last one I wanted to highlight is new parks and facilities. We know that Pasco is growing tremendously, uh, there are new growth areas, parks are going in, um, it feels like every other day I'll get an email from Brant about a new park that's, uh, coming in, so there's a lot of change happening, uh, but also a lot of interest from those neighborhoods wanting to see more trails, more parks and so forth. But there's also an opportunity to connect with some of the things that make Pasco, Pasco so amazingly unique, and that's the river, access to the river. So one of the top priorities, I'd say probably number one priority we heard was a continuous public waterfront, uh, so all along the Columbia River with connections to riverfront parks, to downtown, those are definitely, uh, a, a top priority. A community-scale play area, uh, now this is something that you wouldn't necessarily find at a neighborhood park, but this is something that you would find downtown, for example, or a, a brand-new, large-scale community park where you have a, a sizable, interesting, interactive play area that's community-scale, so anybody from all over the city can come enjoy, uh, using it. And then parks and new growth areas. One of the big part, parts of this plan, one of the most important parts, is to help guide where new parks and facilities and trails are located. So we are working on that currently to identify locations and quantity of new parks and park types and new growth areas. Uh, next slide. Uh, just two more slides I wanted to highlight. Uh, one is kind of going back to location, so those were kind of city-wide priorities, but if we think about the different areas of Pasco, uh, north Pasco, west, central and east, there is a little bit of variety, and this slide is, um, kind of a higher level summary of what we heard from the last survey. We had over 700 responses to that survey, and of course, not everybody lives in the same neighborhood, which is great, so that tells us that we heard from all different parts of the city. So these are showing priorities based on those neighborhoods. So in north Pasco, you can see a lot of interest in new parks and trails, uh, greater variety in, uh, existing parks. West Pasco, same thing, having some more variety in, in parks, play areas, uh, you know, more things to do. And then you can see some commonalities in central and east Pasco, a lot more focus on, hey, let's take care of what we have, uh, more repair, replacing aging facilities and features, more maintenance and so forth. So some commonalities, but also important to highlight, where do we need to focus these improvements based on a specific location in Pasco? So one more slide on priorities is more of the policy-level framework. Equally as important as the, the new parks and the facilities and the improvements is improving the strategy for providing parks and recreation. So Pasco does not exist alone, the city obviously relies on a lot of partners, really great partners provide a lot of pretty incredible opportunities, um, so the school districts, Corps of Engineers, county, um, these are all parts of the puzzle, so we have recommendations that we'll be sharing on improving and strengthening and continuing those relationships. Operations and maintenance funding, uh, a key part of this plan is to help guide the city with how are we going to pay for this and how are we going to maintain it? We can have all the parks in the world, but it won't matter if we don't have the funding to maintain and operate it. So we will have a, a maintenance and operations plan that accompanies all the projects so that the city is, is guided in how this will take place over the next 20 years and beyond. And then the last one I wanted to highlight is updated standards and guidelines, and there are a couple of parts to this, but the main ones being, some of the most important parts of what the city does is, uh, SDCs, land dedication, and when land comes in, it's critical that new parks conform to what is in the plan. What the city wants to see should be taking place on the ground, and so that's part of what we're providing in the plan, is updated standards and guidelines for new parks and facilities. And then I think there's one more slide after this one. So the next steps, uh, again, this is, uh, wanted to give you a big picture of what we've been doing, uh, but the next meeting we'll have, you'll have the complete draft plan in front of you, you'll have a chance to review that. Uh, specifically, uh, what you'll be looking for is the complete picture, the whole story from existing conditions to community needs to priorities, funding, and phasing. So, uh, those will all be detailed in the draft plan. There will be several opportunities for the community to review this public draft, so we'll have, uh, some opportunities to review the plan before the next draft. And we also have, um, the Master Plan Advisory Committee we've been meeting with, we'll meet with them to discuss the plan, any changes they'd like to see in that, uh, as well as the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. And so by the time, uh, we present, uh, to the council, we'll have the draft plan with, uh, some comments from these review bodies as part of the, the plan process. So I, I know that was a, a little long-winded, I think, uh, that's what I have for the presentation, but I'd be happy to, to take any comments or questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions from the council? Mayor, uh, Mayor Potem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I can tell it's a lot of hard work going into this, and especially, I, I really appreciate the, uh, the emphasis on, on broad, broad and diverse outreach. Obviously, we, that's something that we're really focused on as a council. A few questions for you. On the, um, kind of heat map sort of, well, the heat map, I guess, uh, for distance from a park, I, I had a couple of questions, it was, there's some things that I didn't, I'm not sure I understood well. Um, it looks like, um, Edgar Brown Stadium and Sunwillows Golf Course are indicated as public parks, but I guess I, I know Edgar Brown Stadium is, is, um, is locked, um, a lot of the time, so I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure if that's really, um, much of a public facility that would be counted for, uh, for a regional park, and, and I honestly do not know if Sunwillows Golf Course is a park or not. I, I would ask for advice on that. I've never heard of anyone walking there, but then again, I don't live over there, so I wouldn't, uh, do it myself. Uh, can I, can I get some thoughts on, on what was counted in here and why certain facilities were counted as part of the, uh, the public park process for this?
Yeah, yeah, great question. Obviously, this presentation has some snippets of more, uh, mapping and analysis that we did, uh, but that particular map that I had in this presentation was showing access to all, uh, all parks and facilities, so neighborhood parks, community parks, golf course, uh, you know, sports complexes that may or may not be open all the time to the public. We also had another heat map that just showed developed parks, so neighborhood parks, community parks, and it actually winnows away those, you know, walk sheds quite a bit when you start to remove all public parks, but that's a, that's a great point, so we did factor in kind of how are parks used into that analysis.
Okay, great, and it was a, and I think it was a, it ties into a point you made, um, in the post-party presentation, that we have a lot of different types of parks, um, and their uses are, um, may, are certainly not uniform. I appreciate that. And then the other question I had in terms of prioritase, prioritization, that kind of related to this map, is walkability is one thing, but then, um, when we look at population density, that's another big portion of it, of how many, you know, kids are going to be in the area, or how many people are, are going to be, you know, served by those parks. Um, is that, was that accounted in for some of your, with, with your recommendations?
It is, yeah, so we had a, the one green map, if you remember, the, the equity, uh, park equity map, we had, uh, five indicators that we used, and I can just quickly list those, so residential density was one of those, so that was based on, um, uh, again, the census information that we had, also communities of color, which is the non-white population, uh, percent low income, uh, percent, uh, higher percentage of youth population, and then again, the areas that are outside of that 10-minute walk, but yeah, residential density was calculated. of that 10-minute walk. But yeah, residential density was calculated in that.
All right, I appreciate that. Just, I think, one more question for you. When I'm looking at the vision and I'm looking at some of the priorities and other items, you know, can you talk to me about large-scale facilities in our community? You know, I brought this as one of the, prior to this item, I talked a little bit about, you know, potentially the need for an outdoor amphitheater, which I think ties in well to some of the community feedback in terms of, you know, large gathering spaces and such. We have the Happo Center. We've been talking about building community center. And we talked about rebuilding or renovating our Martin Luther King Center over just off of Oregon Avenue. So some, but I don't see a lot of words in here about some of those, these facilities, which are, of course, some of the most expensive facilities in our, that we own for public use. So can you talk a little bit about how those do or do not engage with this master planning process?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. And that, again, as a draft vision, that might be something we can add to is the scale, because there's definitely, what we heard is a range of, it's nice to have a local neighborhood park, but I also like to go to a big event or, you know, something where the entire community is out there. So we did hear quite a bit of that. In the specific recommendations that we have, we do have recommendations for the larger community facilities, the indoor recreation centers obviously a big part of that. So those will come through in the more detailed recommendations for the plan. But I think you make a good point about articulating that in the vision to say that there are these, you know, community-scale facilities versus the more local serving that are really important.
I appreciate that. And of course, of particular interest for us lately is the Happo Center. And I'm not sure if that falls within this master plan or it would fall in better under economic development. I'd look over to staff to see if there's a recommendation. I don't want to force something that shouldn't be in here into here, so I'm not recommending that, but I'd be interested in your thoughts.
Yeah, we could certainly have discussion on it internally. Happo Center being a county facility, I think it was left off a little bit from here, but certainly it's a facility within our economic development and in our area. So we can certainly have that discussion with our team for this final phase.
Great. And if it's not appropriate here, do not, we're not trying to ask for it to be force-fed. If it's better to as an economic development driver instead, I'd love to have a conversation with that separately if that's the appropriate spot. So.
We can definitely explore that.
Okay. Final thing for me is I really want a zip line to Kennewick and Richland, so please add that here. Thank you.
Any further comments? Well, it looks like there's no more comments. I do want to point out, though, looking at your presentation, I just lost it on my agenda, the, where there was a dot, people's feedback giving you, putting a dot on, on asks, I guess it would be, the majority of the concentration, and it's in Spanish, I know this, but the majority of the concentration is looking for shelter, picnic areas, and, you know, more like family gathering under, under shelter, really. So that's, that's good to see, that the community is providing their feedback, especially communities that like to get together in large gatherings and share food. Thank you. Thank you for that. So we'll move along in our agenda. Again, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that. We'll move along to item B. Single-room occupancy, housing moratorium discussion, Director, okay, Mr. Ferguson.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I'll just start us off with the, kind of the legal background, and then we'll have Mr. Gonzalez come up and actually get into the meat of it. But essentially, we're at a point now, we, back in March of 2022, earlier this year, we passed Resolution 4158, which put a six-month moratorium on single-room occupancy portion of our code. We did that only for six months. We did not do it for the full year. The full year would have required us to also adopt a formal work plan. So we have a little more flexibility because we want the six-month version to study this essentially as we see fit and as we're going along. So really, where we're at tonight is we're about a month out from this getting to its expiration. So we want to get back to you and find out, get some more direction and make sure we're spending this, this time talking about the developments, the things that have happened, but as well as making sure that we're coming back to you before. We are in a little bit of a different situation this time around. The first time we were able to pass a moratorium, and then the statute says that within 60 days, you have to have a public hearing and then adopt findings. This is a little different. Now we have to do our public hearing and adopt our findings prior to the extension. So at this point, that's why we need to get going on our public hearing notice if the council decides that they do want to pursue extending that. Now's the time to get us working on that so that we can make sure we get our notice published properly, get our public hearing, and then are able to adopt findings consistent with what the council needs to, needs to have for the next six months. The, just a quick update, and I think Mr. Gonzalez knows a lot more about kind of what's going on in the area. Obviously, there's been a few higher-profile examples that folks have been talking about, and I did want to distinguish just a little bit about the difference between where we're at and where some of those others, other local municipalities were. Both the City of Richland and the Port of Kennewick had two particular examples where they were, there was a potential for the single-room occupancy developments to occur. In both of those situations, the municipal corporations were also the underlying land owner. So we're a little different in that we don't, we don't own the land that we're trying to regulate. In this case, we're a pure regulator, and this deals with our zoning code, not necessarily anything to do with any particular property where, when you're the owner, you have a lot more say about what can and can't be used on the property above it. So we're not in that situation, but we're still in need of getting some direction from council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Just here to answer any questions I can with regards to the context of single-room occupancy units or SROs within the context of our very soon-to-began Housing Action and Implementation Plan. As mentioned on page two of the staff report, there's a list of bullet points about the particulars that would be relevant for the study of SROs, and just want to reiterate that those are pretty key factors that will be addressed regardless in our Housing Action Plan regarding all housing types, regardless if they're single-family detached dwellings, apartments, duplexes, or potentially single-room occupancy housing. So I just want to emphasize that. Those particular three bullet points will be a part of our Housing Action and Implementation Plan, but happy to answer any questions I can this evening about it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Any questions from council? Yes, Deputy Mayor Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barahassan, and thank you, Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Gonzalez, for kicking this off. I'm supportive of continuing the moratorium until we have a better set of information in front of us. I know there's been a lot to do about, I think, one of the Richland properties, or I think it was one of the Richland properties that is moving forward. And when the rates or suspected rates, I'm not sure if they were rumored or actual, of what that was going to cost for one of these units was, was pretty impactful to the community. That was not well-received. That was, you know, people felt like they were being told this was going to be affordable housing, and the prices did not seem affordable to a lot of folks. So I'm still interested in seeing how this, this falls in the mix, understanding that, you know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, and we will know more soon. I think that's prudent to maintain this moratorium for this, for this period of time and see what we, will we know in six months. The question I have for you, Mr. Gonzalez, is what more do we know since our moratorium was originally passed in terms of community, like when, what else has happened? Do we, do you have an initial impression of what's happened in, around the trade cities for units that are similar to what we have in moratorium?
I don't believe there's been any other actions taken or developments that have been proposed, other than what Eric Ferguson had mentioned. So they're kind of stagnant right now, and particularly in Pasco with the moratorium in place.
And the last question is, we have three permits, conditional use permits that have been issued already. Do we know how those are proceeding? Are they proceeding?
Yes, I believe one is in progress. That would be the location off of Oregon Avenue, just south of Highway 12. And I believe the other two, I don't believe there's been any movement on them. The special permits have been approved, but no actual building permits have been applied for by the applicants.
Is there a sunset date for those, the conditional use permits?
Yeah, I believe it's five or seven years, but I can confirm that number.
It's an extended period of time. It's not like.
Yeah, the permit will expire.
Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, well, I feel, I'm not opposed to, actually, I'm leaning towards extending the moratorium just so that we can get more information, more data, and be able to give actual, accurate information to the community and those that wish to apply for these permits.
I was just going to comment that. Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to comment that I also agree with Councilman Maloney that we should extend it. I think that's the right decision at this time.
Thank you.
I just have one question, Mayor. The bullet points that are listed above suggested actions and options for the council, are those planned, planned tasks that staff are going to be pursuing in the interim as the moratorium continues, regardless of decision? Or is staff looking for direction from council on those bullet points?
I think the answer would be both. We're certainly going to take a look at all housing types and housing-related policies in our Housing Action Plan. I do want to mention that the completion of that Housing Action Plan is likely to be this time next year. So it's about a year or so from now until that plan is ready for hopeful adoption. Obviously, we'll present that in incremental pieces to council and the Planning Commission, but we are a year from a final draft, I'm sorry, a final, yeah, final draft of the Housing Action Plan being ready for a decision.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, I guess if I could, what data exactly are we looking at? If staff puts an action plan out and just says we have a recommended baseline of two or three units of SROs with this, you know, density recommendation, is that sufficient data for the rest of council to see? Or are you looking at, I feel like you're looking at more qualitative data in terms of what the impact for the city is, not, not recommendations from staff as far as what number of SROs we should have. Am I on the right track here? Is that what the rest of council wants?
I would certainly want more than, than just a recommended number of units or such in the, as part of the mix. Yes, I'd want to know more about the why, what was the impact, how does it affect, like we discussed when we first passed the moratorium, we had a lot of questions.
I just, I just want to make sure, because I thought, at this point, I thought we'd have at least some sort of data presented to us by the time we extended our moratorium. So I, I'm kind of, you know, as our councilman Roach made a great point at our retreat, you know, we made, we all agreed, setting our city council goals to make sure that homelessness was addressed, and this seemed like a tool at the time to do it. And, and I'm still leaning towards this as a viable action, because I don't have any data for or against. And all the data that was presented when we established the SRO, lean towards it being a favorable recommendation, and I still default back to that. But I just want to make sure that when and if that action plan comes back to us, it doesn't kick down the road. I want it to be the only time we look at it and we move on it. So I was make sure that council's requests are being heard and incorporated into the action plan so we can get it going.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Thank you for that, Councilman Compos. No further comment. So we'll move on to item C on the agenda, intent for annexation, the Alfred Cole annexation, and we have Director White or Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, and good evening again, Mayor, members of council. This is an item on a recent application from the owners of properties located east of Cal Trail Road, approximately half-mile east of Route 68 and about a quarter-mile north of Burns Road. The total site area is approximately 20 acres comprising of two 10-acre parcels. The owners have submitted a notice of intent to commence annexation, which has been reviewed by staff and our legal department. And the notice of intent is sufficient to initiate the annexation process. And as Director White has mentioned, I think numerous times over the past couple of years, the annexation process is kind of a two-step process. One is to accept the initiation and the other is to move forward with the proposed annexation. So the next date to consider a resolution commencing the annexation process would be August 15th, and happy to answer any questions I can about this proposal.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Compos?
Thank you. Was this parcel of property, the property that the rest of the people in that area wanted excluded from the annexation, and now they want it included?
No.
Okay, I just wanted my memory refreshed, is all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments? No further comments. So I guess we expect to see that in our next agenda. So moving on, item D, Pasco Public Facilities District Updates, Director Radka.
Yeah, just wanted to provide some quick updates from an operational standpoint, and then I believe City Attorney Ferguson will provide some more in-depth legal updates. But as, as we all know, the Pasco Public Facilities District successfully passed their bond issue on April 26th to begin the sales tax collection for the future Aquatic Center. So ironing out some of the timing there, sales tax collection would not commence until January 1st of 2023, with payments to the PFD most likely after the first quarter, so around April 1st of 2023. So city staff has been working on just determining that timing and outlining just some of the operational parameters with the PFD. This has included working on a draft budget. Obviously, the community is very excited about this project. The PFD is very excited about this project. So the PFD has requested to begin work in earnest as quickly as possible. So we're working on a draft budget, helping them along with that to determine if there is a need for assistance from the City of Pasco to help them get things started. Namely, one of the biggest areas is recruitment and onboarding an executive director or someone that would work directly for the PFD board, which would sort of transition staff here at the city into more of a support role at that point. Obviously, payment of salary to an executive director, whether it's through contract or direct employment, is certainly a consideration. So we consider that in the draft budget. But even if we, prior to the completion of 2022, community engagement, even a little bit of design could also conceivably take place as well. So really trying to iron out all the parameters and operational possibilities that the PFD could have as we look at that. So we look at the ramping up the staffing for the Public Facilities District, someone to manage this project, manage the board and act as that liaison to city staff here at City Hall. And significant work on bylaws and charter updates. So I think that's my basic introduction, and turn it over to Mr. Ferguson.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so some, some of you folks now have been here long enough to, we've amended this thing, their charter for the Public Facilities District a few times now. It's a little bit unique because charters are typically essentially the constitution for a particular organization. So those don't change very often. So it seems like we've been doing that quite a bit for this. But it's been necessary because, as I stated before, we had a PFD that was pretty much 20th century, and we're trying to kind of bring it into the 21st century now. So with that being said, obviously, we've got the ballot proposition that's moved forward. We've communicated all of that to Department of Revenue so that they're aware that, obviously, they, they track it on their end as well, but we want to make sure that they're aware of the upcoming change to the, to the tax structure in the City of Pasco for sales and use tax. The, the next step that we really need to get going forward on with regard to the PFD is, as Mr. Radka was referring to, is really related to this idea of employees or contracting. And in our charter, or in the PFD's charter, there's a provision that states that they, they can, they may use the city staff for their support staff, but they may not employ or contract without council approval. Now, I'll be frank and tell you that I don't know that that's totally legal, because they, PFDs have a lot of abilities to be able to contract, and they have innate powers that are, that are outlined in 3557, or should be 3557. So regardless, we need to get it changed. Whether it's legal or not, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, it needs to be, I noted, and don't quote me on that, but don't take that out of context. But the, at the end of the day, what we need to do is we need to get it fixed. And so that's part of the process why we're here. As some of you might recall from our previous amendments, there's three different ways we can do this. The PFD can ask the council to make some certain amendments, but that requires a 30-day process. The other way is if the law requires us to make an amendment, if there's been a change, for example, a piece of legislation. piece of legislation at the state level has passed that we need to immediately amend it, we can do it that way. Or the third option, which is what we've utilized over and over again, is the ability for council on its own initiative to make these changes, so uh that would be my preferred uh method to move forward, uh but essentially what we really need to do is be able to get uh the PFD to be able to adopt their own bylaws. Uh and bylaws are much more similar to like statutes uh than than constitutions are much more uh um amendable, uh so we need the PFD to be able to set their own rules for uh things that are much more specific. I will be honest and tell you though, our charter is quite uh uh particular and in terms of dense of uh the uh direction, uh that's why there's never really been a need for the bylaws because the charter is pretty uh expansive in its uh direction uh for what they're supposed to be doing, so uh we need to shift some of those things out of the charter, we need to get them over into the bylaw category so that the the PFD can uh start to do some of the things that they need to do to move forward with their project, obviously, um but uh there's a big caveat in that there's nothing that they can put in their bylaws that are in uh contradiction to the charter, so uh that's why we're here, uh we've got uh some changes, uh I told you about uh obviously uh the largest change, some of the things uh will will need to stay in the charter uh with regard to officers and roles and those types of things, uh quorum and and Robert Schur's award or those types of things. Uh but then as we move over into the bylaws category, we'll try to shift some of those things. Um and um but they shouldn't be substantive, they'll be uh things that the the really, quite frankly uh the charter shouldn't be addressing uh anyway, so uh with that, I guess I just need some direction from council um about how, what process, I didn't wanna be presumptuous and and assume that uh council would be willing to uh take these uh changes up on their own, but uh I certainly would appreciate some direction so that we're uh can communicate that back to the uh to the board because I know they're getting antsy and and they're ready to get going with their bylaws.
Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Roach?
Just a comment for this council is we could proceed forth with a amendment to the charter. That's my suggestion.
And I see several none, so I think that's the way we're gonna go.
Great, uh so I, they won't be too significant, uh so uh we can turn those around and have those back to you uh next week. Uh if that's enough time, uh certainly, yeah, there's no requirement to move on those next week, but I don't think that you'll find that they're uh significant enough to not be able to address next week, but if you do, uh we certainly have that option. I just didn't wanna uh to rush it, but we do have another meeting, I'd like to uh be able to get some direction back to the board. So if if uh next meeting would work, we can have those to you.
City Manager.
So good evening, Mayor, Council, just uh one other comment on the on the interim financing needs, uh the first check, I believe, uh that the PPFT, the Pasco Public Facilities District will see will be April, early April of next year. And as Director Ratkai said, there's one, we wanna help them get staffed up. You know, just because they deserve that, they they need that kind of support and we we really can't give it to them, given all that's going on in our city business, you know, so we're already pretty stretched to try to do that and then two uh and probably equally, if not more important, is we wanna get this thing moving forward. Uh and with uh with an interim director, uh interim executive director in there uh be able to start that engagement process, hopefully maybe even be able to start some, as as Director Ratkai said, preliminary design. That's gonna take some money, we're gonna have to do an RFP and and hire a a qualified firm to assist them and and uh it'd be, it'd be kind of a shame to wait until uh early next year to start that kind of work. And so I think we can get a jumpstart in the project about six months or so if we can start doing that now and then I I would um just add that uh we're probably looking on the order of a million dollars. Would be my guess to to be able to pay for some engineering, some outreach and uh salary. Six, six, eight months salary between now and then.
Mayor Tom Maloney.
Thank you, um Mayor Brahas, and thank you, Mr. Zabel, for bringing that up, um in terms of how we would look at funding that, this would be um a kind of an intergovernmental loan, is that the idea that they would eventually pay us back with the proceeds they have from the sales tax?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so we, this wouldn't be a a grant, as it were, where we're paying for this upfront and we never see the money again, but we're, that would be that would be paid back to the city over time.
Yeah, good question, I I meant to bring that up, I was not suggesting a loan, so. All right, we have a good uh general fund reserve uh balance, but uh we wanna keep it as much as we can, so.
I I I don't see Chief Gear standing right here, he might be online, but I know he's looking for all that money he can get, so.
Sure, yeah, a lot of needs for it.
All right, any further questions?
And to be clear, I'd be very, I'd be, I'm supportive of of moving forward on a loan if we have the ability for, and they obviously will have the final financial wherewithal to pay that back. So thank you.
Any further questions? Looks like we're moving forward. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, item E, Resolution Process Water Reuse Facility Phase Two. Amendment number three with RH two Engineering Director Worley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm going to turn this item over to our capital improvement program manager, Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, we are presenting to you a third amendment to our professional services agreement for PWF Phase Two improvements, if you remember, this is winter storage improvement, so it's additional ponds. Um I wanted to walk you through the previous amendments to help understand why we need this third one. The first amendment related to understanding the need for storage being bigger than what we had originally planned uh due to new processors and increased flow from existing processors. The second amendment was related to the acquisition process that we're having with USVR, which owns the parcels to the north and the south of our facility where we plan to install some of those ponds. And through that process with USVR, we learned that we needed an environmental site assessment. Um so we amended the contract for including that work. And now we reached this new point where we are proposing to you a new amendment for their services which is a consequence of having um worked with USVR and identified an expedited process to go through their environmental process beyond just the environmental site assessment, this includes something like a NIPA process with USVR, but there is an expedited process that allows us to meet our most critical time constraint in this project, yet on the other hand, it forces us to go back and redo some environmental processes with ecology, who is funding this project. So should we have done a full NIPA with USVR, we wouldn't need to do um the environmental process through the state, but because we're doing an an abbreviated environmental process with USVR, we are required to go back to the state and do some additional work. So this includes additional um reports and different forms that need to be filled out, so it's a, it's kind of duplicated efforts to fit the needs of both agencies. Besides that, we also, working with USVR, identified a fourth parcel, we were acquiring three parcels before. And uh we have identified a nearby fourth parcel that would allow for our construction activities to um ultimately incur less cost because we can dispose of some um additional soil and use it for our staging and other things. Um this, the process to acquire this fourth parcel from USVR could be extremely similar to the other three parcels and so it seems reasonable and advantageous to do it all under one process. Uh that's what USVR staff um indicated in our uh communication with them, and so we are proposing to expand the services that RH two and RH two's consultants are providing us in order to take advantage of this opportunity and and um acquire that land for an ultimate benefit of the overall project. I'm happy to answer questions, there was a lot of information there.
Thank you for that presentation, Councilman Compost.
I just wanna, I love this stuff, I just wanna paraphrase, what I heard was is that you want to extend the contract because you have a critical path activity regarding your environmental services, that if this is delayed it'll delay, push your whole project completion date out, okay, I just wanna make sure.
That is correct, so um it's, we had identified a process that was much longer before we could acquire the land and use that land. Now there is a shorter process, but that shorter process unfortunately doesn't meet all the requirements of our funding agency.
Correct.
So there's, yes.
Right, but we'll keep, the shorter, the shorter one will keep you on the critical path as opposed to, okay.
Any further questions or comments? Looks like there's no more questions or comments, so we'll see that on our next agenda. Moving along to item F, uh two resolutions, project acceptance for Nor- uh for Twentieth Avenue Head Beacon Project, I'm assuming pedestrian, uh Beacon Project and Industrial Way retrofit project, Director Worley.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and Council, and guess what? Gonna turn this over to Maria.
You will get tired of me tonight. Quite a few items. So we are, good evening, council and and mayor, we are presenting to you uh for acceptance two projects that were recently completed, uh the first one, and I do have some slides with pictures, so I'm gonna go there. Oh yes, perfect, so the first project that we will go over is the Twentieth Avenue Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon. Uh this is a project that was developed in coordination with CVC and it provides pedestrian safe pedestrian crossing location between the campus and the housing development uh across Twentieth Avenue. Um as you may remember, we had an agreement with CVC in order to fund these improvements and all the development of the project was done jointly, although the city was uh responsible for administering the design and construction. Uh this project was bid and awarded to uh Ellison Earthworks and they have performed a great job for us, so I will go forward with the picture, show you what it looks like. What you're seeing is the project location and the plans for the construction of that crossing. Um and this is what it looked before the crossing existed, so there was not really a a ADA compliant way of crossing between the the campus and um the housing, right at the location where the where the housing uh leads to Twentieth, so there was a much longer pass should you need ADA compliant facilities, but people tend to cross anyways where there is not enough room to cross and it's sometimes not safe, so this this need was identified as the direct point across between the two facilities. And what you're seeing right now is uh construction underway. Um on one side, you're seeing all the work done, uh towers, um installing some conduit that was needed for fiber for CVC work and that portion of the work that's fully paid by CVC. And then uh on the second page, you're seeing the actual uh beacon with the solar system. And then this is the final configuration, the project came in right under budget due to quantity adjustment. Um and of course, it's a beacon that is um ac- activated by the pedestrians when when it's needed, otherwise it allows for traffic to flow freely when there is no pedestrians needing to cross. Okay, and the next project is the North Industrial Way Stormwater Retrofit and Overlay. This is a project that was in our pavement preservation program as as well as our stormwater needs. Um this is a a corridor that is industrial in nature and it serves lots of warehouses, including food processors. So there's a lot of heavy truck traffic along this road, we had a deficient pavement condition um in part due to the failure of the stormwater facilities that were existing in that, in that road, and so the project really addresses the stormwater deficiency by installing new facilities or new catch basins and and infiltration trenches that are bigger than the original ones and then uh repaves the road in order to provide for a for adequate surface for the transportation of goods. And so this is the before pictures, which you can see how uh the pavement was uh getting deteriorated and it's worse as winters come and there's freezing and so on, so once once you start seeing damage, you really need to take care of it and address the source of the issue, which was the stormwater. And then uh this is during progress of the project, uh what you're seeing right there is the installation of either catch basins in one of the pictures or the storm uh infiltration facilities back of, in the back of the curve. Um this is a manhole where some of the sediments and if any sediments get into your system. So this is meeting all the regulations for stormwater. And here again, you're seeing some more construction related to the reconstruction of curve and rebuilding those uh approaches to the existing facilities. And then here we're seeing more of the paving, you're seeing some gr- grinding of the pavement on the edges so that we can maintain our uh level at the the curve and gutter, and then the repaving you're seeing right there on the this corner of of the screen and then, of course, the rolling of the pavement afterwards, and there was also striping, which we didn't get a picture in this, in this presentation, but the striping did happen, so it's all complete and um an overview of the construction, the the construction was awarded for um five hundred and three thousand dollars and this was awarded to uh Double J Excavating. And um as you see, there were some adjustments for quantities first, so it was actually cost a little less to the job, but then there were some um change orders, minor change orders on things related to stormwater. Um two were related to stormwater facilities need to be either extended or needing to replace a hole catch basin instead of just behind the catch basin, the improvements added. And that is typically, uh you discover that once you start digging and you see that you actually cannot connect to that catch basin if it's not in in good enough shape, and then um change order number two was related to to an existing monument that need to be reinstalled after the, after the construction started. So anyways, that's the total for change orders and this project is now completed and operational.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from council? Mayor Tom Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Brahas, uh just one quick question, on that change order two, um when I see the words installed properly, is this, was installed as part of the project or was that outside of this project?
It was prior, priorly installed, but it was not contained within within the casing that it needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Looks like there's none, um I for one will say, thank you for putting a cross, a crossing area uh into the student housing, it's always a good idea. Thank you for that, uh moving on to item G, Resolution Amendment Number Two to the East UGA Expansion Sewer Lead Sewer LID scoping agreement with RH two, and again, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, I'd like to turn this over to Maria.
Thank you, Maria. Good evening again, um in this case, we're presenting to you a second amendment to our East UGA Sewer Expansion LID, uh this, this is a project that you may remember, um we recently, you recently formed the LID for the sewer expansion north of the um of of Burns Road, um between Route sixty-eight and towards the east, right? Um I wanted to start the presentation by letting you know that when we first sol- solicited consultants to participate um in a qualifications-based selection process, uh we advertised our our ser- the services needed for this project as full engineering services. And uh we opted to enter a initial agreement with RH two Engineering to help us move the project forward in a conceptual manner to support the formation of the LID should the formation happen. Um we have performed that work, the original scoping included also some permitting support to work with BNSF to uh start those critical items on on permitting to cross the BNSF railroad with um with some casings for the future installation of sewer. And uh we recently executed amendment number one, which reallocated some of the remaining funds in that original contract for moving forward some, again, critical items on timing wise on exploration such as survey and ge- some geotechnical work that were critical to continue to move the project forward, we have some, some uh deadlines that cannot be moved at this point, so um that that is the history on this, on this previous um previous scopes, and now amendment number two, you will see is much bigger in size, it's for one point, almost four million dollars. Um, and that that is to perform the actual design, we are envisioning this design will happen as as. A big design that includes four bit packages at this point, so that we can expedite construction of certain portions. And move in a logical manner towards completing the whole scope of work, um. Okay, there was probably long enough explanation, but I can answer any questions you have on that.
Maria, uh, before the questions, could you just talk about the four different, uh, phases?
Yes.
Um, and then the reason we're pushing this schedule so hard?
Yes, okay, so, um, thank you. The first phase could be to actually build the crossings under the railroad. So we have already started the permitting, once that is allowed, we will get the allowance from the from the railroad to go do that and so we'll build. Those casings and install those casings under. The second phase could be to build, um, the the gravity main serving the dairy goal area. And the lift station enforcement, so that way we can, um, bring, uh, that sewer which has a a. Firm deadline that must be met, and so we are pushing really hard to get that that portion done in time and then. The next phases could be moving towards the west, building in mains that. You know, gravity towards that lift station first on on a section and then towards the more like the branches up into the rest of the UGA. And again, the the timing is there is a big and it has been expressed, the big need for the sewer in the area. And we also have the harsh deadline of their goal starting, uh, operations by the end of twenty twenty-three. So we are, we are moving this forward should you allow us to do full design.
Thank you for that, uh, thank you for the presentation, any questions or comments? Um, Mayor Verter Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barhas, and thank you for the for the reminder and the and the, um, and how this plays in. Um, my only question is, um, whenever we see an amendment like this, I'm I'm very interested in see how this compares to our original plan. Um, so how how does this amendment line up with line up with what we would have expected this cost to be or we plan for this cost to be? After all, this will be, um, cost out to the entire LID and I know that's that's something that we've advertised eight cost. It'll be finalized before before, um, everything finishes, but, um, how does this compare to what we expected?
Uh, so this is actually within a reasonable range for cost of the LID typically, design costs are, um, somewhere in the. Eight to twelve percent typically of construction cost and so we're looking at a at a construction cost of. Twenty-five million dollars or so, so this is well under that typical cost. There are some efficiencies being gained by the fact that the previous development of this conceptual development is. Um, done by the same consultant and and it's all underway and previous experience from LIDs show that. Um, with all willing participants, there are some efficiencies to be gained as you don't have to rework. Your your designs several times as you're cooperating with with the property owners as you go.
Okay, appreciate that, well, good luck with the railroad, um, after the our experience of the Louisville Street, um, overpass, um. I I just wish you the best, thank you.
And I would just add one additional thing, the original estimate for this project for the LID was actually higher than it is now. Because through the initial portion of developing the LID. We met with all the property owners and we were able to come up with an alternative design. With some changes to the grading for some of the properties that eliminated another lift station that was originally proposed. And so we we narrowed the scope down quite a bit and and cut the project cost down. Which I think allowed some of the property owners to agree that this is the a good way to go with the LID.
City Manager.
I think Steve captured it, but yeah, I was gonna say that. Our our initial foray into that, and you see that small number and I knew that'd be a question tonight is, uh. That was really more of an exploratory effort, we we went through the same process we would. Uh, to hire an LID or or an engineering firm to do an LID. But, uh, we didn't authorize or come to council for for the full, um. Amount because we didn't know at that time. How things would kind of pan out, what it would look like, we we had, uh, Steve had been, uh. Successful in working with the property owners out there to get them to, uh, to pony up for the, uh. Funding, the first part of this, uh, exploratory work and now it's, you know, as Steve as Steve explained, it's. Uh, the, uh, the work demonstrated that it was a very promising project and folks are interested in and we're. Doing the whole LID now, so.
Councilwoman Roach.
Just wanna say good job to staff.
Thank you, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation, I would look forward to seeing more of that here soon. All right, moving on to. Item H, resolution amendment to the WPWTP Phase Two Scoping Agreement with RH two.
I, this is a shocker, I'm gonna turn this over to Maria.
Miss Sarah. Final amendment for the night, for for my projects at least, um. So where we're presenting to you today's amendment number one for West Pasco Water Treatment Plan, uh, Phase Two Expansion. And if you remember, we recently, uh, presented to you an award, a bid award, which passed, so. Um, we have Apollo, uh, ready to start work on the side, they are already working already on Phase One. Um, and this amendment to, uh, professional services agreement is to. Have the support of our engineer of record during construction, uh, phase for this project. They would be, uh, supporting our staff on review of submittals and some inspections on site and some some other, um. Change order approval and other things as we move forward, so, um. You see, this is a, as it's mentioned somewhere in the agenda report, it shows that the percentage of cost for the services well below. The standard for, um, construction management during during, um, construction phase, so. Uh, that's a pretty short explanation, this this, I I did some, this amount of cost was already accounted for in the. In in the budget for this project, so it doesn't have new impacts on the budget.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions or comments from Council? Ms. Director Orley, your lights on. Looks like there's no questions or comments, again, we look forward to seeing that on our next agenda, thank you. Um, moving along, item I, recruiting firms for city manager position. Uh, Ms. Chapin.
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and, uh, Council, uh, you had asked, uh, last week for some additional information. Uh, regarding, uh, the process or different recruitment firms and how they may handle. Uh, the recruitment for the city manager, interestingly enough, there's not a lot of history. Um, in regards to the hiring of city managers locally, um. As, uh, Mr. Zabel was the first new city manager to the city of Pasco in more than thirty years. So we really have no hiring history in regards to what we've done previous to his, um, hiring, uh, eight years ago. Um, and both of the other cities really do, uh, Kennewick, Richland do not have any recent history either with. City managers, I did reach out to a Wala Walla, they are in the process of recruiting for a city manager. But they, um, have much more lead time than we do, they have, um, a vacancy that's going to cur- current March. So they have a lot of lead time to do some very, uh, lengthy kind of processes to ensure. The process that they want for their city manager and, um, so Kennewick did respond. I did not, uh, was not able to get that information, it didn't come until today, that they have used the Prothman Company. And I really believe that there's some confusion, uh, when I spoke to the individual, uh, my counterpart in Wala Walla. They talked about the Prothman Company, but that was Sonia Prothman. Who is the owner of the Greg Prothman Company and then we have Greg Prothman. Who is the owner of the GMP Consultants. So not is everybody understanding, I think, the same, um, firm when we're talking about Prothman because they're being. Two different firms now in the state of Washington with, um, the same, kind of the same name, but they do not have the same. There was a o- joint ownership of the Prothman Company, now there's a separation between the Prothman Company and the the GMP Consultants. So our experience has been with, uh, with Greg Prothman, uh, we have also had experience with Sonia Prothman. And our recommendation is to go with the GMP because they are the. They are the, uh, the firm, as I spoke last week, that has really. A broad experience in in filling positions here in Pasco as I indicated in an agenda statement since, uh, two thousand. Uh, Mr. Zabel was hired in two thousand fourteen, Ms. Sigdell in two thousand sixteen, uh, Mr. Orley two thousand eighteen. Uh, Chief Roski two thousand nineteen and Adam, or Mr. Lincoln in two thousand twenty, they have assisted us in that hiring. In those hiring processes and getting into the details of the actual process itself. Is difficult to do when we have potential candidates, um, that are here, we really like to keep that process. Fair and equitable for all all individuals that, um, put in an interest in the city of Pasco, but. Having, uh, a recruitment firm who does have their finger on the pulse in Washington is really critical. I looked at the, uh. Companies in which Wala Walla looked at and. The individual, uh, agency that they picked was Strategic Government Resources out of Texas. Um, I've had some training from the gentleman who is the, uh, the head of of that. Uh, company, that recruitment company, I think they they're, um. They are very diverse in what they do, they do not focus, uh, str- uh, specifically on recruitment, so I think that. Um, in the training that I've had, I think there's an interest, but I don't think that there's the the. The ci- the state of Washington knowledge that we're really looking for when it comes to collective bargaining and. Employee relations, labor relations and some of those uniquely Washington, um, parts of what a city manager needs to know. Uh, when we're looking at, um, the importance of the job in which they do and the experience that they, we would like to see come with the city. Um, we have another firm that was, uh. Primarily in California, I provided you a list of the recruitments that they had filled, I think there were maybe two that were not in California. So again, I think that they're looking for something very different, um, than we are here in Washington when we want somebody that really understands. The rules and regulations, the whacks and the RCWs of Washington, um. Especially the the interest arbitration and collective bargaining is very important for a city manager to have good experience with. And Washington is is unique in that way because we do have such a strong, um, labor relations. And collective bargaining rules in the employees' favor in the state of Washington, so looking at somebody from outside. The state is difficult, I have worked with, um, not necessarily city manager, but particularly. Uh, department heads, police in in particular that come from outside the state of Washington and. Understanding the rules that the state of Washington expects from a leader is, um, really important that we. Have that local Washington State knowledge, um. So I would be happy to answer other questions if you have them, I just feel that, um, still feel strongly that. The firm of GMP is going to provide the city with a timely and relevant process and. Um, recruitment that will be effective for us, for the city of Pasco.
Thank you for that, any questions or comments? Councilman Campos.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Director Chapin, um, for the clarification on which GMP, so to be clear, a lot of my comments last week. Looking back to the record, I I dealt with the Prothman Company, not GMP. I imagine since there was separation, a lot of the processes and policies are probably identical anyways, and so I imagine there's probably no, um. No real significant difference there, um, I'm still of the mindset, you know, this is a big decision to make and I think that it's important that we do it. Timely and by dragging our feet and and kind of expediting, by not expediting this, we really are doing the city a disservice, um. And not just city, but our staff, our staff is under a lot of pressure right now, you know, again, with the news today of of, you know, director leaving. Um, it's, it's a big deal, so, um, I think it's important that we take what Director Chapin sang to heart and move on this.
Thank you for that, any further questions or comments, uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Um, just a few, um, I concur with you, um, I'm a much, you know, HR family here, we. I get it, I get what you're saying, but also the urgency of placement is growing every day, it looks like. So there there's another layer to this as of the last twenty-four hours, I read my emails, so if there is safety and. Um, working with this agency, there's there's some good history in working with this agency because of where we are now. I would be most comfortable supporting, um, moving quickly, um, with them, there is some safety. In them, I'm using that word strategically, um, so I do, I concur with you a hundred percent, I think, um. Councilman Campos is correct, the urgency to care for and take care of Pasco is at hand. And I think we need to move swiftly, smartly and strategically, but I, again, I concur with you and I repeat that. For a lot of HR reasons and I think you follow me, so I appreciate, um, the way you articulated this, I think you did an excellent job, so thank you.
Any further questions or comments, Councilwoman Roach?
My comments would just be to say that I, um, you know, city manager elevated to our, you know, our awareness that there's. That level of burnout that happens with staff and I think that that is a legitimate, uh, thing, a risk that we run with. Extending the timeline of the process of hiring and then with leadership roles that already exist that need to be filled. We can see the the actualization of that burnout being a real risk, so, um. I'm in agreement that going with a trusted, um. Recruiting agency is probably the best, uh, path forward and I'm just wanting to get clarity that would be. Cause when I read the report with the two Prothmans, that would be the Greg Prothman.
It would be the GMP.
GMP.
Cup, uh, consultants with the president as Greg Prothman.
Okay, yeah, that's where I'm I'm at with that.
Thank you, um, Mayor Verter Maloney.
Thank you, um. Yeah, the urgency has certainly escalated, I I I will just, I I I guess. I have a little bit of built up frustration right now because I feel like we've been backed in, the council has been backed into having to make quick decisions on a number of things recently. Um, and you know, um, Mr. Zabel did announce his his, um, retirement day back in June. And so it took a month and a half to come in front of us, so it's one of those things where, um, you know, I would prefer in a number of areas. If we could see about getting a little more lead time, the library contract was one of them where I felt we were in a very tight turnaround. Um, you know, last week we heard that we couldn't possibly move forward with the ballot measure for, um, you know, to have people vote potentially the. The citizens of Pasco vote on a, um, you know, potentially whether they, um, want to move, uh, want to approve marijuana retail sales. Um, it's just been, just been a number of, um, items where we've we've been. I guess forced to make a very quick decision on something that necess- didn't necessarily have to be a quick decision. Um, I think, uh, um, I think Greg Prothman will be a fine choice and I am comfortable moving forward with that, um, he has, he certainly has the chops. Um, but I I do, uh, Director Chapin, wanna ask you to see if you can clarify some of the comments you made. Um, when you talked about the deep Washington roots, are are you suggesting that we shouldn't evaluate candidates that are outside of Washington State? Um, like if we had a candidate from Oregon or Idaho, cause I I guess what I heard from that was that we really need someone with lot lots of Washington experience. Um, not not as a, or for the city manager, was that what you were saying or were you saying something different?
Someone that would have some, um, experience, understanding the labor laws and collective barg- bargaining. Laws within the state of Washington is important, that's not to say that we wouldn't assess any of the candidates. And that's part of what our recruitment firm does for us is actually assess the experience of the individual that. Uh, submits for their applications and helps screen down those qualified candidates so we can look at, um. Any of those qualified candidates that come forward, uh, it's just that's been an area where. Uh, I've seen some individuals struggle. that come forward. It's just that's been an area where I've seen some individuals struggle if they don't have at least an understanding of what the laws are in Washington. Not to say that they don't have some of those same laws in Oregon, less in Texas and, and California. But yes, we will want, we want to do a, you know, send out a wide net of individuals that might be interested in our, our position. But I think that we do look towards the importance of their, the city manager's role when it comes to representing the, the council and at bargaining, and, and that, you know, labor relations is really important part of their role with the bargaining groups.
Well, I certainly appreciate your leadership in our bargaining in the past as well, and I'm, I'm positive whatever city manager we end up picking, that you'll be able to provide your expertise to help them through that process as well. I, I guess I would, I would hate for us to get, get ahead of ourselves when we're in the choosing a recruitment firm stage, to starting to set the criteria for the candidate in this public setting, when there's a process for us to go through for it. Now ultimately, council gets to decide what's most important to us. So I just want to make sure that, you know, no one takes this meeting as a, oh gosh, I'm from so and such and such place, I shouldn't even apply because Director Chapin just said that I need someone from Washington. So thank you for clarifying that to make sure I, I understand that better. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilman Campos?
No, never mind. I'll just muddy the waters.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you for the clarification, Director Chapin. I know we had requested a little more research into other agencies. You've provided that, and you've again provided your input on best options moving forward. I think the majority of us are in agreeance with going with, with GMP, Mr. Greg Prothman. So we'll, again, look forward to seeing the development of this process.
Yes, we hopefully to move quickly so that we can get them out to interview with the council, interview with the directors, members of the, the public, and get a good scope of what it is the, the council's looking for, what the employees are, are needing, and what the public is needing. So we'll be working on that right away to get them out to do those interviews.
Thank you. And, I mean, it doesn't hurt to reiterate, there is a sense of urgency now. So we'll look forward to those next steps.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you again. Moving forward to item J on our agenda, last item on the agenda, resolution bid award for A Street Sports Complex, Phase One, Director Ratkai.
Yeah, thank you once again, Madam Mayor. City council has long determined the need for additional multi-sports use, multi-use sports fields as a priority in their council goals, specifically calling out additional soccer and sports fields, as one of its quality of life focuses previously. With this goal in mind, in 2018, Pasco ACS staff applied for and were successful in obtaining a $350,000 youth athletic facilities grant from the state of Washington. Funding from this grant became available in 2019. Beginning in 2019 and into 2020, architectural and engineering design work and necessary cultural resource survey were completed for this A Street project. The project went out to bid in 2021, but it had to be retracted because there was some additional electrical requirements from Franklin PUD that we had to put in place and, and work through the design. Those adjustments were made, and the project was put out for a, a bid the second time on, in May of 2022. And so as designed and as bid, the A Street Sports Complex, Phase One, will be on the southeast corner of A Street and Elm Street, so east of the Oregon Avenue area. So this will be in the, in, in the eastern side of Pasco. Phase One will include the extension of Elm Avenue south of A Street, providing access to the site, the extension of water and sewer services, undergrounding and extension of electrical, a parking lot for the soccer facility, pedestrian access path, drinking fountain, portable restroom shelter, and sufficient enough playing space for three full-size rectangular multi-sport fields with a focus on soccer, but certainly conversion to other sports as well. This is the first phase of an ultimate build-out of ten soccer fields for the community, most notably in this, in this side of town as well, where they're lacking. This is not our typical, put down some sod and a couple of goals. We're really looking to design a, a parking, parking space. And the ultimate build-out for the ten soccer fields would include permanent restroom facilities, playgrounds, because not every kid in the family is playing a soccer game at that time. And as a parent of multiple kids, I know how that goes, keep them entertained. So at the call for bids, bids were open on June 16th of this year. We received a total of nine bids. The lowest responsive bid was submitted by Big D's Construction in the amount of $1,173,199.10. That included Washington State sales tax. We also did the contingent bid addition for an additional electrical services that were necessary for the project. That was included in the amount of $141,310, which also included Washington State sales tax. Bitter has demonstrated ability to meet the bid specifications, including experience on similar projects in terms of scope and size. This is a long-awaited project, and we're excited to kick off this first phase, no pun intended, as we further our commitment to provide parks and facilities to the community. So total project cost is just over $1.3 million, and this is provided in part from the RCO Youth Athletic Facilities Grant from the state, and the rest of it will be funded through the Parks Development Fund. So at this time, we'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Roach, and then Councilman Campos?
Will you just take a comment?
Sure.
Great job on the, to ACS staff on the grant. I remember you, when I got my tour, when I first got on the council, you gave me that tour of A Street and where the planned sports complex would be and soccer fields. And so was excited about it then, still excited about it now, know it's something that we need. And so we've seen this come to fruition every step of the way. So, great job.
Thank you.
This is actually directed at Councilwoman Roach. Didn't we work on this on planning commission? But I thought it was that Road, we worked on one for like the Road 100 area, I thought. And it never, I don't believe it ever came to fruition, but I'm super excited to see that at least something still came of it. And
That was close soccer.
That's right. It's different. So again, I just can't echo enough what Councilwoman Roach has said. This is great for all the youth in the eastern Pasco side. And I know that, you know, they utilize every field space I think we can get ahold of. I know Mayor Protamaloni made a point that Edgar Brown is frequently closed, and so I'm always seeing kids scale the fence to go down there and play soccer, which I'm, I'm all in favor of, stop at nothing to do what you love, right? And so, yeah, I, I'd love to see this utilized. Great job, Zach.
Any further comments, Mayor Protamaloni?
I won't, won't pile on too much. Agree with everything that was said there. But only question I have for you, Director Ratkai, is will any of the fields in the full, when it's full bill out done, will it even be lighted?
We're considering our future capital improvement plans, and that, that'll be coming up in the, the coming weeks. I believe we have some intent for a lighted field with artificial turf as well. So that should help with year-round usage and, and certainly the water conservation.
Great. I remember having the presentation from, I think, Visit Tri-Cities about, you know, the, the sporting complex. In essence, our fields there on Burton, and how important it would be at some point in time to convert some of those to field turf and get lighting in and, and, and do the whole package. The dollar sign was large, and not something that I would necessarily, that we necessarily had agreement that we could stomach. But if we can do some of those same things here, that would be just fantastic. Not, not perfect, but part of the overall package. So I appreciate that thought. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any further questions or comments? My last comment is that I'm excited to see this project in this area in particular. I know a lot of the kids and families from this particular area sometimes don't have transportation to go to, what is it, Road 36, to the soccer fields out there. And so bringing the fields to, to them is a great accomplishment. Thank you again. Thank you for the grants. I'm excited to see this one.
Welcome.
Thank you again. And so we'll move forward with our agenda. We're done with all our articles on here. Item six, miscellaneous council discussion, any council discussion, city manager?
None this evening.
None this evening, moving right along. Item seven.
I have a question for city staff. I know we participated in a survey for a board retreat. Did the date, did we come to consensus on a date? I didn't catch that.
I actually spoke with April on that earlier, and I think the date that everyone was available, and Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, September 15th? Does that sound about right? 15th or 16th? Hey, let me take a quick look at a calendar. I'm pretty sure it was on a Friday. 16th, yeah.
I'm pretty sure I wasn't available on the 16th. I plan on celebrating my 40th birthday party really hard that day.
Okay, I may not be remembering that quite right, so I will.
I mean, you can join me, but I don't want to talk city stuff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm with April in the morning and get, get out to council.
Okay. All right, we'll get confirmation on that date. Any further questions, Councilman?
Just, last comment. So to piggyback off, you said that some kids don't have transportation to the Road 36 area. I shared this with Tiarvita, and I'm gonna share it for our packed crowd tonight with all the kids, or anybody who's probably not listening tonight. BFT, free kids pass, 18 and under, go get your passes. You can get them online or go to BFT and get them. Utilize them for as long as you can. That's all.
Thank you for sharing that. Mayor Protamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barhas. Just real quick, maybe this is for Mr. Ferguson. I know we had some discussion about, you know, evaluating what's coming up with the request from that we're getting from the community to revisit our cannabis retail sales ban. I, I, I think we had some, some timing that we were gonna get a legal analysis on that. I, I, I think that was today, but I know that you were under a tight crunch on that, so I'm not gonna hold you to that date. I'm just kinda trying to get an idea of what's, what's the timeline look like, what's next?
Yes, so that was Mr. Zabel who committed me to that timeline, so no, I'm teasing. Yeah, no, we, we do have stuff prepared, it just hasn't been finalized. But we'll get it to you this week.
Okay, great, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that we're, that I understand where our path is.
Absolutely, yeah.
And Phil, I'll just add that the plan was to bring that to your next workshop, sort of, sort of, two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought we were gonna have a legal analysis first, and then we were gonna get the, something from Director White, prior to workshop meeting.
On the public portion of the workshop.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, appreciate it. So, so, so the community should be expecting further discussion at, not next week, but two weeks from, two weeks from tonight will be a larger workshop discussion on it, at our next workshop meeting.
Yeah, I think next week, next week we should be able to have a discussion with the attorney on the legal aspects of it in executive session, and then we'll have the public portion following week at workshop.
Great, thank you. I'm just trying to make, I, I know we have some interested members of the community, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand the timeline. I clearly did not. Thank you, appreciate for helping me.
Yeah, probably my, my fault for confusing. I thought we, September 30th was the date that everyone was available. Sorry, my apologies.
Yippie skippy, thanks.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or comments? All right. Moving along to item seven, executive session, any need for executive session?
Not this evening.
Perfect. And it is now 8:43, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.